Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. I have a few things on the agenda tonight, so get going. First, a discussion Village Visitor PSA. Somebody want to take that one?
Liza's here.
Hi, everybody. So, yeah, we've put together the PSA and we've been working with Heidi and Tracy and Kathleen. Teresa's been working on the designing of it. And the goal of the project was to come up with signage that would encourage sort of help manage visitor behavior on Main Street in the village. Try and address some of the issues that we sort of noticed were popping up because as a result of tourism, so things like overflowing trash cans. I think we've all heard about the cans down by Mumu's where they all get filled in one spot, but the other cans on the area are not full. So we tried to come up with signage that addresses that. There were sort of some concerns about people picnicking on the park benches on Main Street. And while we can't really tell people not to do that, and I constantly find myself encouraging people to go to the parks to picnic as an alternative. And so we're trying to do sort of soft nudging to get best behavior out of our visitors. So I don't know if you guys can share the campaign to look at it together, but I can also just read through the different titles that we had of the different signs. There were four different designs. And then one was yes to views, no to trash, which is just kind of one that we thought would be good in the parks in general. And down by the waterfront, there's time for picnic, explore our parks. And that one has a map on it that sort of directs people to the different parks where picnicking would be more appropriate, social distancing would be easier. Who kind of just spread out crowds and sort of dispersed them away from Main Street where sidewalks get crowded, especially on busy weekends. And then, and that one also has an icon for bathrooms at Little Stony Point. And if our public bathroom's down by the train station, we're going to be open, perhaps we could add a public bathroom symbol there. We didn't know yet, so we didn't put it on. And then Fulbin, try the next one. That was one that we thought could be a sort of sticker decal that might be put on the cans where there is tends to be more dumping of trash. I've noticed certain hotspots, and I'm sure you guys have too. Like, the can right at the top of the hill next to St. Mary's Lawn where picnickers come, that one gets full, but the next one down the block doesn't. I've noticed the cans on the side of the street that has food services get more full than the ones one block away. So this might be an appropriate sign if the village is supportive of sticker decals that could go on the actual cans themselves. And then, keep it up, thank you, was kind of our answer to trying to get, trying to encourage people to keep wearing their masks. I don't think any of us feel that we're going to be losing our masks anytime soon or that we should be. I think people are getting a little bit more lax, especially as they're getting vaccinated, which isn't safe for everybody. And we want to continue encouraging it at the same time, sort of take it down a notch from the more aggressive signage that the Chamber put out at the beginning of last, this past winter, which was like, let's not shut down again. Wear your mask and keep your distance. So this one is a more subtle nudge to keep the distance and keep up your mask. And that one would probably be put in store windows. So sort of a poster that goes in store windows. The time for picnic one, we would probably also print as a poster and encourage that to go in the store windows that sell takeout food or picnic foods. Just sort of, again, a dental nudge to those customers. And then yes to views, no to trash. That could also be a sticker decal for trash cans, like down at Mayor's Park or the bandstand. So those were kind of the plans. And we've been talking to Metro North, Tracy Walsh from Putnam Tourism has been talking with Jeff Michelson from our board. And we've been talking to them about whether or not we can put signage sort of on the walkway coming off of the ramp to sort of communicate to visitors as they come off. So that's kind of been the thinking. And the projects, you know, designing has been funded by Putnam Tourism and the Chamber. And Putnam Tourism's happy to cover the costs of printing signage. So that's sort of our proposal. And, you know, we've been working with trustees, but we, you know, want to get your feedback and, if possible, approval to move forward.
So, yeah, Kathleen and I have looked at this. So I guess Fran, Marie, and Dave, I don't know if you have feedback. I was also thinking it would be good to put on the windows of the underpass, you know, that goes under the train would be another spot. Yeah, just to, as the tourist season comes up, to encourage people to treat our village nicely.
I like the signs. I think they're, they're very nice and well done. I don't know how many of each you're planning to print and what you're going to print them on so that they'll get through the summer in terms of weather and so on and so forth. But I think they're, I think it's nice.
So we talked about using, as a, as a trial, using the hardboard signs on H stands like you see at campaign time that could be along the walkway coming off the train. So you sort of see them sequentially. You see the whole campaign sequentially as you walk off the train. And then in other locations, paper, like in the windows, either in stores or Heidi's idea on the, the underpass. And then if you're amenable, we thought about sticking right on the garbage cans these, it's all moved to the next one to try to encourage people to find another spot to dump. Eliza, are those removable vinyl that come, that would be on the, that you proposed for the garbage cans?
Yeah, I mean, they're sticker decals and you can get different grades of sort of quality to hold up through the seasons, but it's definitely removable and it peels off. You know, but if they're made to hold up, you know, you can get a three month sort of durability or like a longer period, like a nine months. It has sort of a, like a plastic surfacing on top of it.
The only thing you're asking permission for then is to apply the decals to the trash bins.
That's right. And also for the village seal, just, you know, to make sure that we have your approval of the signage in general.
Okay.
I'm fine with the, I'm fine with them. I'd like to, you know, once you decide exactly where they're going, I think we should have, you know, a plan or show where they're going. As far as the garbage can go, I think that's useful all the time. So I don't have a problem with that. We are going to put any type of sandwich boards or sticking them somewhere. I'd just like to see where they're going. It's on MTA property, that's their property, not ours to comment on, actually. And I guess if the, on the underpass, as long as we don't have sign pollution, so to speak, I'm fine with that also.
We could send you a plan with photos of exact locations and garbage cans if that would help.
Sure. And the size, size of the decals or what they would look like?
Yeah, the decals would be 18 by 24 is the size that we kind of measured out or something in that range. So not enormous, because if it wraps around too far, you can't see the whole sign. But big enough for people to be able to read it and see the images, like the map and things like, actually, the map wouldn't go onto those, but the words should just be very clear.
Okay, I mean, if I could see it, maybe if you had one or whatever, superimposed on something, whatever.
We can Photoshop that and send you some images.
Were you, were you also asking about adding the bathrooms at the bottom of Main to the map?
Yeah, yeah, that would be one other thing that we would want to include. And where we've been trying to reach out to Foundry Preserve to see if the scenic, scenic Hudson has opened up the bathrooms there yet, too.
I did hear from Rita Shaheen, and they were having a meeting, I think it was last night, and making determinations. I haven't heard from her since. I can check back with her.
Okay, great.
Were you thinking to expand the map so you could see all the locations?
It's been expanded. I think the most recent one that we've sent has Little Stony Point right now, and we would want to add the bathroom sign to by the train station and then Foundry Preserve would be the other one.
I'm not sure. They said something about, you know, putting tripods or something or all putting on things like that. I don't know if that's a good idea. I don't know what kind of signage. I mean, the businesses have signage like that, and we try to keep them as flat against the buildings as we can, so we're not sure about that. I don't know where else you would hang them or what you'd do. I know you said you put some thing stuck into the ground coming off the train, which is fine, or it's up to them, but I'm not sure.
They said yes.
Okay. What if, I wasn't sure what else you were thinking of putting in terms of standing things in the village, or are you planning to just stick them on poles or?
So most of the poster signage would go into storefront windows down at the visitor center. The village hall had a window that was open for it. We could put them there. And then there's just the two signs about litter that would be applied to garbage cans in sort of specific locations. And I'll make some kind of map presentation of the exact cans that we would want to put it on for you guys.
Sounds fine to me.
Do we need to make a motion?
Don't think so.
No, no, I don't think so. I think it sounds fine.
Great.
If you could send us what they kind of look like, that would be good. And the sizes, I'd be interested. 18 by 24 sounds, that's not what I was thinking of when I was thinking of a decal, so that...
All right. I'm gonna, oh, sorry.
I'm going to go ahead and put in the order for the, for the corrugated signs. And I did pay a little bit extra because they seem to have a heavier stand, so hopefully it won't be so flippity-floppity in the wind. And we're ordering extra just in case something gets ratty looking so that you'll have nice replacements and you'll be able to put them out and keep them fresh.
Now, the corrugated signs are the ones going along the Metro North walkway to the village?
Yes.
Got you. Okay.
And the Chamber will monitor the signs along that walkway to know when they need to be replaced?
That's right. Yeah, that'll be part of our visitor center operations.
Okay.
Great.
Just keep in mind, some of the garbage cans are not flat surfaces, they have slats. So the decals don't be able to go on all of them that way.
Okay. They may be able to stick to those, but, but we could, I guess, put them specifically on the recycling ones.
Yeah, I don't know how many we have of those, or it just might be a little awkward replacement on them, just something to keep in mind, just. Yeah, I don't think they would look very good on the ones that Kathy Carnaval donated. She donated the blue and the green ones that are metals that have separations, they're not solid.
Or like slatted.
Yeah, the slats, yeah.
Might cause a funny texture in the image. All right, so I'll look at that and look at which ones have smooth surfaces that are more appropriate. Right, thank you for working with us on this. And especially thanks to Heidi and Kathleen for helping work through the designs with, with the Chamber and with Putnam Tourism.
Awesome. It's a good collaboration, I think.
Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Tracy, for coming.
That's, I'm happy. This is one way where I can help, and I'm happy to do it. So thank you.
And Teresa, for her great design. We love this, the 70s retro.
I think they're very aesthetically pleasing and the way they all go together. You can even put the four signs in a window if a shop owner chose, and it would still look very nice, not mishmash. So I think it'll, it'll be good.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Okay. Next up, we have, let's see, the request from the Cold Spring Film Society. I don't know if Jen's on, is she?
Hi, Jen. Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Hi, Jess.
Thank you for entertaining this letter or this proposal. I don't know, I'm assuming all of you could read it over beforehand, so I won't waste time summarizing it. But basically, as you know, this, the village is a co-sponsor of this free local event every year, except for last year, which got canceled. This marks our 10th anniversary year this year. If we, we have a few ginormous hurdles to jump over this year, including we can't put on the film series until we fundraise for a new screen, which is why I'm coming before you now, instead of, normally, since we're all volunteers and we're sort of a shoestring organization, we could wait until longer to start planning. But our fundraising for this new screen got canceled in the middle of COVID, and now we need to raise, you know, $12,000 or something like that to buy our next screen. So we're looking to sort of get your feedback on the safety proposal and your, take your temperature about a July start for a sort of limited capacity. Usually, we have six screenings, so we're proposing four screenings this summer, very controlled, but at least allowing something to happen and supporting the mental health of our, all of our neighbors a little bit, and allowing pretty much one of the safer events in the village to reopen at a, you know, following the law at a limited capacity. I don't know if you guys have any questions or if you want me to summarize the safety plan or something, but?
No, I don't think you have to go over everything. Well, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, I look through everything. I think you've gone above and beyond what we've asked others or, you know, as far as your safety plan goes. I also think that it's a, an event where you can actually, you know, people aren't mingling, you can actually set up areas where people can, you know, be stationed, sort of be. So I think that's a good thing. You can keep the social distancing easy. And, you know, I think your plan is a solid one and kind of covers all the bases, so I would love to see you guys be able to have the films there, and I would, I'm for it, hear from the rest of the board.
I agree. I think it's a great safety plan. It was really thorough. And, yeah, outdoor events would be so lovely to see again. They can be done smartly, which clearly you have a plan, so I'm on board.
I am too.
I think it's a great plan. I think you guys have put a ton of work into this, so we really appreciate it. I'm all for it.
And what are the films?
Based on what the films are. We don't know yet. We have to argue about that next, I guess, among our volunteer board, but so that, that sounds like good news, we can.
I'm for it.
Thank you.
It didn't feel like summer in Cold Spring without the films.
I know, right?
It really didn't.
Yeah, okay, well, great. So I won't, you can, again, you are a co-sponsor, obviously, the village, and you have been since day one, so thank you on behalf of the Film Society. You are the co-sponsor, basically. So we'll remain in contact with you about this, et cetera. I mean, I don't know if you want to have a point person that I or our representative can sort of coordinate with and talk to if you would like some updates when it gets closer. This is very far away, but obviously, conditions on the ground are changing, so they're supposed to get better, more people vaccinated, et cetera. So do you want to have somebody be the one I contact about this later?
I'd love to be that person. This is a fun one, if everyone else is okay with it. I don't want to...
You take all the fun ones out of there.
Heidi, have the fun.
If someone else wants to have the fun.
I'm fine with passing it.
Jen, can you give us the address where people can send donations?
Oh, good idea.
Yes. You can go to our website, which is coldspringfilm.org, and you can donate online easily if you, by credit card, or you can send a check. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so you can send a check to 192 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York.
And make the check out to?
The Cold Spring Film Society. Thank you for saying that. We are, now we have to raise all the money, so. It's my least favorite part, but thank you. Okay, I won't take it more every time. I know you have a long meeting. I see Michelle on there. Hi, Michelle.
Jen, one thing is just that, you know, you know, I mean, I'm sure it's obvious and you realize that if something does go south here, we might have to cancel. So we're keeping our eye on, you know, on what's going on in Putnam County, and so there's no guarantee.
Of course, right.
As you know, but just realize that.
Not from what, right, that's totally, 100%. Okay.
Jen, if you, if you post something on your Cold Spring Film Society Facebook page or something, would you just send me a note, and I will copy across?
So I was, I was going to mention that, Fran, because I forgot that you're in charge of that. We want to prioritize locals, so we're limiting capacity, which means that not everyone that wants to go is going to be able to go, unfortunately. And our plan is to, if it's okay with you, since the village is a co-sponsor, to put out the announcement on the village Facebook page first, because that's very local, the people who follow the village stuff, if it's okay, or something like that, before we put it out to our email list, which is broader, et cetera, to our social media.
Sure.
So if I'll just be in contact with you if that's okay with you, and also...
That works fine.
Sure. Not that we love the tourists and we love everyone coming, but the season, you know, we're trying to, you know, sort of condense and be a little bit more local if we can, so.
Great. Okay, thanks as always, Jen.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Good luck with this.
On the tree, the tree announcement or last week, or the Tree City of America.
Oh, yes, this is our fifth year, Dave. I don't know, I missed the meeting, but this is our fifth year at Tree City, so thank, thank you for saying that.
Do we have, do we have signs, Jen, that we could hang around the village? I've seen other municipalities that have, you know, official signs that say we're a tree city.
And they're up, you just haven't seen them.
I haven't, I'm sorry. I think I asked that last weekend, and someone told me that, too.
I'm going to, I'll tell you what, there's one on 90 or on Chestnut Street, right, as you come into the village from Garrison, there's one, and there's one on the opposite end of 90 as you come into the village there. But the stickers that say five years aren't on there yet, so I will be, as soon as I get them, I'll put them up.
Okay, so they're, so they're not where I walk.
No.
Or I take my daily walk, okay?
Yeah, so, but I'll be at a future meeting to talk about Arbor Day celebrations next, you know, later on, so you guys get to work, and thank you for hearing this.
I'd like somebody to press release to both papers.
Oh, thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Okay, goodbye.
Bye. Thank you.
Okay, now onto some more, some fun stuff.
Oh, come on, I thought we had the fun stuff.
Hopefully, Michelle's on board tonight.
Somewhere she was. Oh, there she is.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, Michelle.
She's still muted. Michelle's lost her voice.
Are we starting with, while Michelle's getting organized, are we starting with general fund or starting with water and sewer?
I think we'll go with A.
What she wants to go with.
Okay.
Do her children have her tied up? This is like the Marcel Marceau version of the budget.
I like it that way.
Jeff, that was echo it.
And Michelle is...
Wait, oh, we could do the boxes.
So she's called in, so she's on here twice.
I don't know why I couldn't get it on the phone, on the computer, but I'm on the phone now, so sorry about that, guys.
Not a problem.
Okay. How are you feeling?
I'm okay, for now. No, but I'm okay.
Is your taste back and smell?
No.
Oh, dumb.
At all. So we could start, I guess, with the general fund. I had, I sent out a note of just a couple of minor changes I made. I changed the tax amount on the fireman service, you know, by $480. I just had to reallocate for the appropriate percentages, and that allowed me to add in the change for NICO. Other than that, I didn't make any revenue or expense changes, but there are some changes I think we need to talk about with parking, C Street, E code, things like that, and make a final decision on what we want to do there. Feedback from anybody on those topics?
Yeah, Michelle, as I said in my email, I've reached out to them again, C Street, that is, and I haven't heard back. The lack of responsiveness, I am assuming, I'm attributing that to their attempt to determine what they can and cannot do financially. So no word there.
Okay. Any updates to parking? Because if we're going to go ahead and change parking, there's going to be a significant startup cost, I think, and that's something that we need to make sure is in the budget, not just revenue, you know?
I think we're going to make some decisions probably tomorrow night at our meeting. We do have all, kind of all the information on enforcement and those costs, and also for app metering and, and those costs, and we haven't really decided yet. Marie, do you have an idea of or a ballpark what it would be, though?
For metering, it depends upon what firm we go with. If we go with one of the three smaller firms, there would be no upfront charge, although, so there would be no upfront charge for them to, for them to provide us with their mobile parking app. The other firm, which is probably the most, that, the other firm, which probably has presence in, in so many areas surrounding us, the upfront cost would be about $1,200 or $1,500, and the annual cost would be $3,000. That's on top of the convenience fee that they would take. All of the firms will take the convenience fee. We'll never see that, and that's the way it is now. We don't see the convenience fee that Flowbird applies whenever anyone uses Flowbird to do a mobile parking extension in at Mayor's, at the municipal lot. So we've got three that are no cost, one that has an upfront cost, and then an annual
And convenience fee is sort of docking, docking per transaction, a bit per transaction?
It's a fee per transaction upfront that the user pays, and then there's another fee that is a transaction fee that we pay. And, Michelle, you've seen those total costs from the... And uh, Michelle, you, you've seen those um, total costs from the merchant of record. So that's where the, that's where the transaction fee comes in, and that transaction fee is either paid to the merchant of rec, I believe it's paid to the merchant of record, not to the company that's providing the mobile app.
What does the merchant of record mean? Sorry.
That's the firm that provides essentially the credit card services.
I see, so the, the, the Visa, Mastercard, Amex.
They have one processor who can do a number of those.
Uh, and that, that processor takes a chunk?
A big chunk.
A big chunk.
But those fees, a lot of those are added on. Uh, like if it's $2 an hour, then there's an additional fee, which is, you know, tacked on to whoever's using the app.
That's, that's the transaction fee.
Right.
And the transaction fees from all companies run between 32 cents per transaction and 35 cents per transaction.
That's uh.
But then underneath that, and that we, we don't pay, and that the mobile app company takes right off the top, but underneath that.
I'm sorry, as far as budgeting goes, neither of those are really, I mean, you know, important in a way. We're not, it's not money. I mean, if we're not making money, um, then we're not, I mean, basically, maybe we won't make $2, we'll make $1.75, but as far as budgeting goes.
So underneath it, okay, so if it's um, $2 an hour, on top of that will be a transaction fee that, that the user will pay. And that transaction fee will go to the mobile parking app. Underneath that, the merchant of record provi- provides all the credit card processing in there, which we pay for. In there, there's a per transaction fee, which we pay for, and that ranges from um, ten, I think you said today, today, Michelle, 10%? For some, for our current uh, MR, and what we.
It used to be about 17%, and it looks like just from the trial from the past two, three weeks, that it's down to 5, 6%.
Okay, what uh, Michelle and I did was, we worked with um, the merchant of record that we have for the municipal lot. And Michelle just quoted the seven, seven some, 7% fee that we pay for each dollar that we bring in. And with the new agreement with the merchant of record processor, we've gotten that down to 5%. Uh, so our goal would be to keep those prices as low as possible. I haven't, I, I have had conversations with Park Mobile, and I've told them that what we want to see is something close to what we're getting from uh, Heartland, which is the merchant of record for the municipal lot. I've not gone into that level of detail with the other three uh, mobile uh, parking app companies. But our goal would be to keep that as low as possible.
Michelle, for budgeting, does it, does, does this conversation matter? What, what that percentage is? Isn't that like a profit margin? I mean, so, I mean, as far as calculating it in for the budget, I think that's really hard to do, and uh, and I'm not sure why we, I don't know why the discussion's there, or can you explain? If there's a need to discuss that transaction fee?
I, I mean, it's always good to put, you know, expenses and revenue in the budget if you can, but I'm more concerned with upfront costs. Like the parking meter, we had to buy a piece of equipment, if we need to pay a software company, you know, a thousand, five, whatever it is to start the process of using their software, that, that's the kind of stuff that I'm more worried about.
So, so looking at ours, Marie, I would say that the high end would be $4,500, somewhere in there, 5,000 max?
So upfront would be, upfront would be 12 and fif- between 12, 1,200 and 1,500 for one company. And, and that would be the upfront cost. None of the other companies have upfront costs. That same company has a $3,000 a year um, fee.
Right.
So that, Michelle, would need to take into account if we chose to go with that company. The other three companies do not have annual fees.
And is the, are the benefits, I could see, I could see entering an agreement like that if it, if the company that cost more, provided more flexibility or more services, enabled us more capacity around the village, what, what? What goes along with the higher amounts? Or are you seeing that the services are roughly the same? It's the, the prices that are out of whack?
Well, I, I think for this, the, we're talking budget here, so I don't really want to get into, I don't think we necessarily have to get into what's being offered. We'll make that decision in the, in the committee.
So does it make sense to just?
The information, the information I think we need to know is the high end right now is $4,500. And that could be, that would be if we went with that company. And once we have all the data and it can, we'll come up with our recommendations in the committee and explain our decisions on, on all of it.
So it sounds like it's good to have a placeholder in the case that that were the company that the committee came forward and recommended, we should stick in the 4,500.
Yes, and then there's enforcement, which, Marie, was, was that 3,000? Was that the one company?
That's $10,000. The cheapest company is $10,000.
What do you, what's enforcement?
Yeah, what's that mean?
So that would be, that would be an L, ALPR and a printer, a mobile printer.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, what, what the enforcement would require is that the person who is the enforcement officer types into their phone the license plate number that they are trying to inquire about. And they will get that.
Wasn't it that, I thought the one company, they amortized it, and it was $6,000 a year for three years?
Um, hold on a second.
9,000, $10,000 upfront, or they'd amortize it for three years at 6,000, I believe, for each year.
How could a, how could a single, you, you don't mean a single LPR, because that would work in one location?
No, it's a mobile, it's an ALPR, not an LPR.
An ALPR, but that would have to, it, it would be, how would, would it be something that would work in multiple locations around the village? Right? Because we're talking about multiple locations.
Think of it as a cell phone.
Uh huh. Oh, I see, so, so the person, the person who is doing enforcement is taking the image? Yes? Okay, I was imagining a structure of, of ALPR, okay?
No, no, that wouldn't, that would not work for us.
No, okay.
Dave, I'm just looking it up. Um, so the amortization, um, so the uh, the United Public Safety is 9, 9,500 a year one, 3,800 a year two, 3,800 a year three, or 6,000 per year. Um.
So as a placeholder, I would use $6,000 a year. I, I think that would be safe, right, Marie?
Yeah, yeah.
That's just for enforcement, correct?
It's.
Just for enforcement, yeah.
That's, actually UPS is enforcement and back office.
Okay.
Um, and back office has a lot of promise. Um, but I, I've really not gotten into the detail there with Kathy as to what that would entail, whether or not that would fit into how she does her job.
You mean the court clerk?
Kathy Costello.
Yeah, the court, the court clerk, okay.
Do, do we have any um, any rough idea of, so if we put out, say, 6,000 a year plus 4,500, um, and we got this up and running by what, July or so, do we think we'll be able to make that much in, in parking fees to cover this? Through the course of the budget?
The, the, the chat, we have no idea what, what we're going to make on Main Street. Uh, Main Street has anywhere between 100 and, and 120 spaces. If I compare it to the parking lot, the parking lot has been averaging between 20,000 and $23,000 a year. And interestingly, it looks as if this year is going to be our best year, and that's, that's with all, most of COVID. Um, so we, we can make it back based upon what the parking lot is doing. However, these are expenses, right, and I don't know what the projected revenue would be. I, I just have no clue.
If you, if you took a guess of it from what we do at the parking lot, I, I think we would be really safe in saying that, that that it'll pay for itself easily. We're adding, we're gonna add Mayor's Park, it's, this is all what we're talking about, and we'll be deciding on it's parking committee, but we're gonna be adding Mayor's Park, which is like 34, somewhere in there, spaces. Um, we're gonna be adding the hundred and some for Main Street. So we're already, we're like tripling or quadrupling the, the number of, of spaces that we have, you know, in the municipal lot. Plus, we want to, you know, we want to charge more in the spaces too, especially for municipal lot. You know, we can double that, I think, on Saturdays and Sundays, uh, easily without a problem, and uh, so you know, I know we need to have placeholders. As far as, as far as it paying for itself, if people are coming like they have been over the last decade, then it, I think it'll easily pay for itself.
Well, I, I said it in an email, but I think that's worth saying again, sometimes you have to spend to earn. It's like, you know, universities that do major fundraising have a budget for their fundraising staff, because those folks are bringing in money, right? We have to, we have to invest in the infrastructure to make the money back from parking, and I sort of see this as the lowest hanging fruit for monetizing visitors.
Okay. So, um, I'll add in, you know, some expenses, and I'll match it on the revenue side, at least, you know, so that it's a net zero impact for right now. And then anything over that would be profit, because we really don't know when it'll get up and running and how much we'll make, but if we can, you know, be almost certain that it'll make as much as it spends, then at least that's net zero on the budget, and that's good for me for now.
Great.
One expense that you can get rid of, Michelle, is the $57 a month um, for um, the, uh, that Devo bills us. Because we, we will probably not be using the parking meter any longer.
Okay.
We'll probably get rid of the parking meter and go with a full mobile app everywhere.
I'd keep that money in there, maybe get Jeff a couple, you know, more pens or something, you know?
Only with his name on them.
I think he wants, I think he wants message pads, you know, that what someone called and what time, yeah.
I'm thinking Scotch. Cold Spring branded Scotch, I think would be better, but that's just.
A good fundraiser, in my opinion.
Moving on to a whole item on the. Um, so then uh, Ecode, is that something that we're gonna put in the budget?
Jeff, we haven't heard back from him, have we?
No, we have not.
You were gonna have a meeting with him on Friday?
Did, um, and we, we talked about seeing what we could do in this, in this budget year, if at all possible, if there was anything. Um, he was gonna try to tweak some numbers and get back to us, but I know he was on the road, so I don't know when he was actually getting back to Rochester that he was um, banked out of, so it may be it may be midweek before he actually gets back home and actually sends us something. At this point, um, we have no idea, other than the prices that we had from last year.
Yeah, it looks like the $10,000, the $9,995 that they quoted us last year. There probably won't be too much movement off of that, though some of it, if he could get a contract to us and we could kind of set some milestones, uh, we might be able to do something out of this budget year. I told you that we could get up to 30%, 35%. Provide, that makes sense. I just want to give them money, say, here we go, but if they could start work for us and moving this stuff online, we're taking our present code and making it into a searchable format and do what they do with Ecode, and that would be a start, one of the first milestones, so hopefully we'll hear back from them within the next week or so, or have a better idea. But I think the 10,000 that they quoted us last year, based on our conversation, seems like it'll still hold.
I, I would be concerned about having them use the current, current code, because I think the conversation that Fran and I had a year or more ago, they would do one full upload. And, and then they would expect that there would be incremental changes.
If we.
Go ahead, Fran.
We, we have explained to him where we're at very clearly, you know, that if he does that, we don't want to repay him. We've told him that we're changing close to 50% of the code, if not more. Um, so if he does that, we don't want, we don't want him to quote something that's going to be double, double charge, you know, do it now and then have to redo it next year. So we were very, we were very clear with him on that, now whether or not that's what he understands by the time he gets back to Rochester and sends us a quote. Um, but that was uh, you know, that was uh, you know, how we were very, we told him very clearly that, you know, you're putting up, if you're putting up the current code, expect that there's a massive amount of changes coming through, and we're not going to pay for the same thing twice. So um, so we, you know, we left it back to him to figure out if he could, I mean, obviously, they know we're, we're interested in it, you know, we've spoken to them for like, this is going on, I think, the third year. Um, so I think they want to work with us, so we just need to see exactly what they can put in writing and what, what exactly is going to come out of it. Because we're definitely not going to pay the same thing twice. We're not, not going to pay for them to load and then another 10,000 for them to fix it.
Right, and the issue was the development of the legislative history, right?
That's.
The issue is.
Talking about the old code?
Well, they, they will pick what's, what's currently on our website, you know, and then they'll work back from the 1976 or so and, and put the history through. But then knowing that we have massive changes to it, um, and that's, that's where most of the work will come in, that, that's where we want to see how he quotes that, so it's just sort of still wait and see.
Would it be prudent to put um, 3,500 into the 2021 budget?
Um, that'd be, that'd be good for us if we could, Jeff.
I would love to see it move forward in this budget year, if it can.
It's true, we're not gonna be able to do the whole thing in this, this current budget.
Michelle, can you find money? Can you find 3,500 in the current budget?
Um, skipping down a little bit, so right now, the tax rate is a very slight decrease from last year. So the price per thousand of assessed value is a little bit less than it was last year. If the board was comfortable with raising it to the equal level with the best information that I have at the time, you know, because assessed values might change a little bit from what the county sent me to the tax roll in June, but assuming that it's the same, it didn't change, I can add $3,100 to the budget and the tax rate would be about the same that it was last year.
Can you, can you add it to the current year budget? You're, you're talking about 21 to 22?
For the current year, yes, before May 31st, yes.
Okay, great.
Year two.
And that gives us two of the three years.
I'm not understanding, though, that if we decide to go with them, you're planning on taking 35 from this year and then the rest from next, I don't, is that what we're?
Oh, spread it, we'll spread it out over two budget years.
Okay. And, and how much input is needed from, from us as, as a board or individuals from the village? Because I really, 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 really don't want to take on anything more, like, that we don't have to. And Ecode is, as much as I'd love to have it, if it means that we need to have more meetings or whatever, uh, I'm not for it. So what's involved, I guess, is the?
No.
No.
No, there, there's no additional lifting, there's no additional workload to the board with anybody. If anything, it kind of takes it off, because we get to ship them stuff and they do the formatting afterwards, but yeah, it, it doesn't require any additional work on the board's part.
So there, there are about 10 or 12 chapters that, that are not being touched by code update. They could start with that.
Yep.
And right off the top.
Okay, well, let's have the conversation, and if we can, uh, if we can budget for those, those amounts.
Okay, so would it be okay to increase tax levy by, you know, $3,100, and then the tax rate would be about the same as last year instead of a slight decrease?
So that's like 2 cents per $1,000 of assessed value we're talking, right?
And you say that again, Fran?
2 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. It's actually 2.06 cents per thousand, so if your house is assessed for 400,000.
3,100 would increase it by 2 cents per 1,000 assessed value. So it's a very negligible change to increase by 3,100.
And, and if that ends up being the same or uh, slightly higher uh, tax rate, less than 0.01%, that's really good news.
Yeah, it really is. I mean, 2 cents per $1,000 is, is nothing. It really is nothing. Uh, and I know we've tried desperately to keep the tax, taxes. And I know we've tried desperately to keep the tax, taxes down this year, but that's so minimal.
Yeah. In talking about the tax rate, that means we give up the, um, Butterfield money other than the twenty-five percent that gets forwarded to twenty, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two.
Can you explain that, Marie? What, what you mean by give up?
We should have Michelle explain.
Let's have Michelle explain it.
I, I don't follow by give up for Butterfield. I'm, I'm not following.
Okay, so right now we can go up to, uh, the CPI is one point oh three and the Butterfield.
Oh.
Okay.
So, right now, we're assuming that, um, we would carry our taxing authority of twenty-nine thousand dollars into next year. Next year, if we raise it by three thousand, this year, we only carry over twenty-six thousand of our taxing authority into next year. Um, but one way, we have to raise it this year or next year, or we lose it. So.
We're not, we're not giving it up then. We're, we're giving up a margin of it.
We're taking it this year, the increase, instead of taking the increase next year.
Mm-hmm.
And if we, if we, we need it this year, we might as well just, you know, I mean, we're, we're nickel and dining this. I think if we need it this year, we should take it.
Yeah, and it's a longstanding, it's a longstanding goal to get this, to make the work of the, of the village clerk and his staff easier. Um, and it's a, it's, it's a benefit to that increased development. It's one benefit of the, of the development, to be able to have that flexibility.
But, Michelle, don't we give up some money because we can go to one point oh three plus one point oh four? And if we don't use the one point oh four, are we carrying that full amount over to the following fiscal year? Not twenty-one, twenty-two, but twenty-two, twenty-three? Or are we going to lose some of it?
You can only carry two percent of the total tax roll. So it depends on how much more Butterfield adds, depends on how much more we'd be able to carry. Um, but I don't really think that, you know, the three thousand makes too much of a difference. Um, but if we could raise it this year and it's a smaller change, it pays for something, a goal of the village, I think it's worth it to take that increase this year.
I'm not arguing about taking the increase this year. My question is, are we leaving money on the table? Why not?
No, not.
By not raising the taxes higher this year?
No, but we'll have to have this conversation next year and see how much we're allowed to carry. And we might not be allowed to carry as much, or we might be able to carry more. It depends on inflation. It depends on a lot of factors that we just don't know at this time.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so then that's all the, all the questions I really have about the general fund right now. Does anybody else have any questions about the general fund?
I had one, which I just have to find it. Um, it was a reflection of a comment that Marie made about, just give me a second to catch it. It was regarding settlement. It's not, doesn't sound like the right title. Say that again?
Do you mean taxes in the water fund?
Nope, it was in, in the general fund and it was related to legal expenses. Sorry that I'm having a hard time putting my finger on it right now. It, Marie had raised the question of, was it enough, given, given, um, pending litigation, where we had it, it went from twenty-five hundred to five thousand, and I thought Marie was asking if it needed to go higher. Oh, here it is. Um, I get my ruler, hang on. It's, uh, judgments and claims nineteen thirty-four hundred.
Okay.
Did that end up where you were requesting it to end up, Marie? Did that, did we meet the concern that you had? It's now at five thousand.
It, it's always been at five thousand. We've spent twenty-five hundred of it this year so far. Um, that would be a deductible on an insurance claim.
Uh-huh.
Um, so if our deductible is twenty-five hundred and we have one pending insurance claim, um, the five thousand would allow for two next year and we'll, we, there's one that we know about. So I think five thousand deductible.
So as the deductible, I think I misunderstood the conversation. Okay. Um, and then the other one, the other general fund question I had was just for my, so that I, my own understanding is clear. It's a highway question related to CHIPS. Just give me a second to find it. I made the mistake of printing front to back and sometimes that makes things harder. Sorry to keep you waiting. Oh, here. Under Highway Street Maintenance Resurfacing five one one zero four hundred, we have tentative one fifty-six nine twenty-three. Is that a reflection of the, of the, of CHIPS funds?
It's the majority of CHIPS plus about two thousand or twenty-five hundred for coal patch, so that Bugsy can repair potholes.
And it's, is that the result, just so that I, I can understand, is that the result of multiple years of CHIPS money being compiled and now ready to go out to, to actual projects?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for explaining to the newbie.
Sorry, you said actual projects. I don't know that we have any actual projects on the board.
Well, Bugsy, when we met for budget discussion, he had, uh, some priorities that, that he talked through for paving projects. I don't know if those will be what he actually does, but that's what I think this number reflects, right, Michelle?
CHIPS would be for, mostly for paving, engineering, street work, some street equipment. Um, nothing's been decided on where to spend the money.
Right.
That is the. Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that as a sort of a baseline conversation about things he saw needing to be addressed, existing things he saw needing to be addressed. Okay, thanks.
Michelle, first, CHIPS question. Um, Jeff sent around a letter that we got March sixteenth and it says basically, um, reimbursement eligibility for state fiscal year twenty-twenty-one has increased to ninety-five percent of a portioned amounts. Does that mean we have lost some of what we were expecting? Are we down five percent?
We're not down five percent exactly because the state was holding back money that was already apportioned to people so that the state had cash flow. Um, so it didn't mean that we lost it. It just meant that it was a holdback of five percent. So if we applied for a hundred thousand, they'd give us ninety-five and then we have to wait until they were ready to release that extra five percent.
Gotcha, okay. So the numbers that I'm seeing on, on this letter are like five percent lower than what, what we've really been assigned. Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so then the water and sewer fund overview. Um, there's self, you know, sustaining funds. Um, there's water and sewer usage fees for consumption. There's flat rate fees. Um, overall, um, I, in my memo, typed out a couple of big projects that Matt wanted to work on. Um, they're ongoing projects. They've been in the budget before. Um, some of them are like, you know, a two and three-year plan of doing things in phases. Um, so I'm not sure if anyone has questions on specific lines, any projects. Uh, Marie did ask about the taxes in the water fund. I did confirm that the two props, the two tax maps that were sold um, are for the six hundred and fifty dollars in the budget, so I can remove that now that the property has transferred.
Great.
Um. So the, I guess I'll start with one big thing in the water fund that, um, we didn't know about and I touched on it last, um, meeting. We have to replace all of the endpoints on all of the water meters. Um, and that for hardware alone was quoted at almost forty thousand dollars. Um, Matt's working on getting quotes for labor for having a third party come in. Um, the third party would do the work. They would coordinate the meetings with all the residents. Um, they would do a lot of the light work. Um, so he was getting, he talks to three companies, but I don't think they've given him tangible quotes on paper yet, um, but they were working on it. Um, so my thought was I put forty thousand in the budget next year to be paid out of fund balance, the one-time project. Um, and I think that there'll be some money left over this year that we should order a bulk of the endpoints in this year and then save the money next year for labor and, you know, issues because I do think that on any project you do, you have to budget for contingencies. Um, so once I have the quotes from that, I can finalize the fund balance amount for next year. Um, but it would be, again, a net zero. Um, and I'm comfortable taking it from fund balance, uh, because the water fund balance, even with taking that out, would still be, you know, over seven hundred thousand. So I think this is a perfect opportunity to use that money.
I agree.
I, I reviewed the village code and the village code says essentially that the cellular endpoints are owned by the property owner and they are responsible for their maintenance. I've sent that, uh, section of the code to Matt. I could interpret that to mean that the costs to upgrade the endpoints should be borne by the property owner. However, in reality, if a property owner chooses not to do that, the village is back in the situation of having to manually read meters, which is not where we want to be. So I'm not sure that we should pull the trigger and do that, but that is the way the code reads.
So would you recommend a modification of the code to reflect?
No. No.
What are you recommending? I'm sorry, I'm not following.
I'm not recommending anything. I'm just stating that that's what, the way the code reads.
But it sounds like it's not an optimal, the way the code reads creates a suboptimal situation where we rely on the property owner to replace the endpoint, right?
Actually, actually, the code reads that it's the property owner's responsibility to maintain the endpoints, having to change them, which is a once every however many years. It's not, I mean, we could consider this not being maintenance. Um, so it's still the property owner's responsibility to maintain the, the, um, meters and I wouldn't change that. It's not our responsibility if your meter breaks or if something falls on it or whatever.
Right. I'm just wondering if we need a, a level of clarity about this particular issue because it, how often, it's, I know it, it feels like we just did this, but I know we didn't just do it. It was a few years ago. But how often will we have to replace the endpoints?
Whenever the technology changes again.
So there's the potential for it to happen fairly.
When did we, when did we do this, Michelle?
It was five years ago.
It feels like yesterday.
Pardon me?
Twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
Five years ago.
Right, right. Um, and it was probably, well, anyway. I would not recommend changing the code. I would not recommend implementing the code.
Yeah, I wouldn't consider this maintenance as such, so.
Do we need, does it need more clarity?
I don't think so. I think, there's always, we're paying for it. I don't think anybody's going to care. I think it's fine.
Okay.
So it's coming out of, coming out of fund balances, the, because it's a one-time?
Yeah. And it's, it's a large amount and, um, before the budget is, you know, Matt's quotes come in super high, then we're going to have to go out to bid with it and then I can adjust, um, the number. Um, but I'm, but I'm anticipating that most of it's the labor and we'll try and order some endpoints this year. And then they'll have them and then they'll be ready to go sooner, um, because we can't be the only one that has to be doing this. So I don't want to be scrambling in December. If we can get ahead of the game right now, the endpoints are even on a six-week back order. Um, so I like to try and start moving if this is something that we really have to do, which it seems like we do.
Do have to do it. The, the old endpoints, uh, the, the endpoints that were installed in two thousand and sixteen will stop working. The newer installations are okay.
Yeah.
But I believe there are less than a hundred of the new ones.
Yeah, it's less than ten percent of our meters.
So it's, at some point, there was a, a technology upgrade to a portion of the meters in the, in the village.
No, no. Sorry.
Trying to follow.
New endpoint, new cellular endpoints that have been installed, which would be all of Butterfield?
Ah, uh-huh, ah, okay.
And, and if there was a problem with a previous endpoint in a homeowner's house that had to be replaced, they were replaced with the new ones.
The newer one.
It is, you know, there's about nine hundred and fifty of them and probably over eight hundred and fifty of them are old.
Got it.
It's, it's a lot of, um, so that I have that a fund balance. And then the other thing I have out of fund balance is, you know, um, a fifty thousand dollar allocation for engineering for alternative water sources and dams. I don't think we have a contract or a concrete thing, but with ideas floating around, we're definitely going to need engineering money. Um, this line item has been there in previous years funded out of fund balance. Um, for when we thought we were just going to maybe fix the dams. So, um, I don't know if fifty thousand is enough. It might be too much. Um, any feedback on that? Is that a comfortable number for now? Um, it's all fun.
I think it's good to start with. Michelle, where does the dehumidifier for the water plant fall in?
Um, I have that being funded out of regular operating budget.
Okay.
Um, but that's something that, uh, Matt said it's a very old system.
Yeah.
Um, and the nature of the water plant, it really needs, instead of to just be replaced, he wants an engineer to find a better, efficient way before just replacing the system.
Okay, sounds reasonable.
Um, a question about coming back to, uh, equipment and, and responsibility of property owners. Is it, I'm, I am asking two, two questions to see if two things are, are possible. I know we don't frequently have the issue of, of pipe breaking between a house and a main, but it does periodically and it can be quite an expense. Are we able to, is it, is it a, an appropriate use of the fund balance to establish a fund that can be used to offset costs to individual property owners? Or, you know, maybe divide the cost by number of linear feet from property line to main to, to help subsidize the, the cost? I'm thinking about a number that we've had that have been, that have been very expensive to homeowners.
My opinion, no, I don't think we should pay for it.
I don't think we should use some, I don't think we can use fund balance for that, right, Michelle?
I think this is a much bigger question than just, can the budget hold the money? It's whether, should the village be doing this?
Right.
I think that's a much bigger topic than, you know, can fund balance pay for it?
The other thing I thought about, um, and I don't know if this is appropriate or allowable under, under New York State laws, is could you, could you establish a, a de minimis fee in each water bill that goes toward building a fund that could offset costs from the main to the property line? So that everybody in the village is equally paying in per water bill into a fund that's established to help offset costs?
That seems like a great idea.
I don't know if it's allowable.
Right, theoretically, I think.
I mean, after listening to Matt and that, and, and we're going way off topic here again, um, but.
I just don't know when else to bring it up since we're talking about water budget. I don't know how, what, when an appropriate time to bring it up is, so, sorry.
I, I, you know, according to Matt, if what Matt talked last time, more people are going towards the way we are right now. It's been this way forever. I, you know, it's like putting a roof on your house or whatever. It's part of, you know, in my opinion, I think it's, it's part of, you know, your responsibility or what you take on when you purchase a house. It's, 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 it's from your house to hook up to a service that the village provides and it's always been this way. And it costs ten thousand dollars usually and there's a reason for that. And you have to break that down and what people are actually, you know, uh, you know, some people are replacing lines and that brings up the price. It's not just, you know, tapping into the main. So there's a lot that's involved in it. It's you know, it's not something you want to spend your money on, but there are a lot of other things when you own a, own a piece of property. So I don't know why we should be paying for it.
It's not one of the sexy ways that you can spend your budget for improving your property. That's, that's for sure. I, I don't, I guess I just continue to be surprised that we don't cover from the main to the property line.
I know we never have and it's, you know, I mean, most, most people understand that, I think.
Well, so, so is the question about whether a fund, a relief fund could be established via a, a small fee and regular bills? Is that a possibility?
I've never heard of something like that. It doesn't sound like something that a municipality would get involved in, but I don't know for sure. But it just doesn't sound like something that, you know, we could do, but I really don't know. And then again, it's, it's the question like, should the village be paying for it? The code says no, all of that. And then, then where does it stop? You know, somebody wants, I don't know anything about pipes, but what if somebody wants to buy a Tesla of pipes and somebody else needs a Honda of pipes? Big price difference. Where do you draw the line? Who gets fixed? Who doesn't? It's, it's a very sticky situation that I, I don't think that the village budget or maybe residents wouldn't even want to pay for that themselves either, whether they're paying for it with their regular water fee like flat rate or they're paying a separate $2. I don't, I don't know. So I, I think that's a big question before we bring it to the budget.
Well, it also depends on choices people make about how they root the pipes and all of these things. Obviously it's not something that is going to get solved in this budget cycle. I just raise it as something to, to think about since it was such an issue. And we had so many cases of it this year that were a struggle for people to deal with.
I think first and foremost, there's a legal question and then, you know, can we do that? And then it becomes a code issue of changing the code. So talking about it in terms of, you know, we're supposed to talk about budget tonight is premature because there's other hurdles that really have to be addressed first before we get it to.
Understood, understood. I just raising it because we're talking about water and sewer and sort of maybe putting a pin in it for a, for a later consideration and conversation.
You would have the same request then Kathleen for sewer main breaks or for sewer line breaks.
Fast question on, on the, sorry, I'm, I'm bearing off before I forget. The 50,000 that we're pulling for engineering expenses, wasn't it, maybe I misunderstood. Chasen, weren't they going to do the engineering for free, provided that we promised them the job? Is that still the case? Are we still looking in that direction? Or are we just holding that 50,000 in case?
They, they brought that up as some arrangements they had had with other municipalities. They did not bring it up as something that they would offer to the village, although they would entertain the question. I don't think, and, and Dave, you're the one that needs to tell us on this. I don't think we've gone back to Chasen on anything yet.
No, we haven't.
It also seems somehow not to pass the smell test, that you would not bid a project like that. But say we'll, we, we'll work with you if, I, I know nothing at this point. I'm just responding to the sound, the sound of that proposal.
The second, the second company we've dealt with because we dealt with, who was the other company when Greg was around? Who did a lot of work for us?
Tectonic.
Tectonic, yeah. Okay, never mind. I'll take the question back. It was just, I wasn't sure if we needed the 50,000, but we probably do.
Michelle, in, in sewer, there were some things that Matt needed to get done sooner rather than later. Are they in sewer, in the sewer budget?
For this, for, for May 31st?
For the one, the, for 2021 to 2022. I think there was fans was one of them. I, I'm assuming it was in the aeration tanks. There was also a type two, and I think this was probably water, type two cleanouts. They got all the level one cleanouts done, but they had to do some, they were now looking at the type two cleanouts. I'm saying cleanouts, maybe it's storm drains.
Is that the third bullet point in the sewer, the 20,000 for sanitary sewer repairs and improvements? To have the E2 basin cleaned?
Thank you, yes.
Inspector.
Was that in sewer for whatever?
It's in, it's in sewer, it's under sewer fund.
So the slight change to that, Matt's going to have the E2 basin done before May 31st? And then do it in next year. So the money will still be the same. But I'm going to have them both done, you know, prior to June and then after June.
Great, great.
Then a couple of years ago, another section was done. And I believe this is part of, you know, it's, it's good to know where, you know, there's compromises, if any, in the piping. I think it's part of our licenses that we have to do this periodically. And then as for fans in the aeration, Matt didn't mention that to me. So that makes me think either he's already doing it or it's not that expensive.
Or it has a different name.
There's filters that need to be done in the water plant. Those are large items, you know, $25,000 a filter. And all three of them need to be done. We use two at a time all the time. So the third one is a backup or to rotate, give them a break. And he's working on that. He's had people come look at it to see if it's better to repair it, like bits and pieces. And, you know, rehab it or to fully get in a brand new filter. But they're old and that's in the budget.
So what are the two bans in sewer for? Sorry, you've got the ban principal and the ban interest. What are they proposed to cover?
So in the sewer fund, it's covering the aeration upgrade, the whole sewer plant.
Okay.
And then so did, it redid a pump station. It purchased the portable emergency generator for the pump station and it did some super lining. On the water side, it had done upgrades to water mains. A couple of years, these are all projects that are finished with the exception of the siding on the blower building. But all this money has already been spent. And eventually we should go to a bond, but the interest rates are so awesome right now that it doesn't make sense to spend $30,000 on a bond. When we don't know what else we need. Cause if we bond now and then we do something with the water plant or the water source or anything else, we're going to be in the same boat. We're going to have a bond and then keep renewing the bands. So while the interest rates are low, let's keep renewing the bands when we know if we have to do any other capital improvements. And then we'll lump it all together into one big bond.
And so the, the ban interest is for a one-year, one-year term? Okay, because I mean, if you read all the press, rates are going up.
I, I spoke to our financial advisor for the village from Unistat. That's what they do. They do municipal funding. And he was quoting less than 1.5% with the given market. So
Yeah.
I'm, I'm impressed with that. So I think do bans for another year and then in December, see where we are with what we need for capital projects. But eventually we'll have to lock in a rate.
Right. Okay.
Other water and sewer questions? The funds aren't as fun as the general fund. They're pretty basic.
And they're pretty healthy, finally.
Yeah.
I just had too that I wanted to ask for, to understand what they are. 8110400 administration contractual.
Okay.
And that's for some sort of support for Greg? Consulting Greg, I mean, Matt, sorry.
So that would be like administration, I guess, would be like, like back office stuff or so the, the postcards for the water and sewer bills come out of that, things like that.
Okay. And then why is, it's not very much money, but I noticed that treatment and disposable disposal chemical testing is going down. It's, it's like 250 bucks, but what's, why is that?
In the sewer fund, it's going down because we.
Sorry.
Right, that lower. So there's, there's mandatory testing that has to happen. And then there's retesting or there's specific testing, you know, if you want to do extra sampling, if someone has a problem, things like that. So the, the mandatory testing, it's not, it hasn't been $2,000. We haven't hit it. So I lowered, we, Matt and I lowered it a little bit. But on the water side, they're increasing the mandatory testing significantly in the county. So that went up by like 3,000 on the water side.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions?
Nice job, Michelle. And your statement about the general fund, that was very hopeful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have questions in fund balance? Any, anything for me?
Okay. Thank you for being patient with lots of questions that, that come out of ignorance, getting there.
So Michelle, we, we approve this, was it next week or the week after?
So on April 13th is the public hearing. So we can make changes before then and we can make that. And then the, the two, the last Tuesday in April will be the approval. So that adoption would be on the 27th. So I don't anticipate a lot of changes, really no changes to water and sewer with the exception of, I'm going to take out the taxes. That's 650 on the water. That's not an expense. And I'm going to talk to Matt and see if I need to increase the fund balance contribution on water fund or the labor on the endpoints. The general fund, I still think there's not a lot of changes, but there are a few changes that might have to happen, which I send down an email like I do. Any changes that I make, whether it's a dollar, 5,000, I try to, you know, keep a bullet point of what I do so that we're all on the same page. Cause we might need to make a little additional changes for E-code or parking, you know, after decisions are made tomorrow. But the way the budgets look now, I'm comfortable saying that they're, you know, 90% done. Maybe even a little bit more. And I'll have a draft of all the narrative out, you know, by the end of the weekend. And by narrative, I just mean the schedules that go in front. It just highlights some of the changes. It puts a salary schedule in there. And it talks about our debt and our fund balance. It's all stuff that we've already talked about. It's just putting it into words for the residents to read.
Michelle, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care, good night.
Are we making a motion to adjourn?
Not yet.
No, oh, you were saying goodnight to Michelle. Okay.
No, I was saying goodnight to Michelle.
Anybody else have anything else they want to bring up or? So if not, then if there's anyone that has a question out in the public world, now's the time. Anybody out there? Jeff or Michael?
Hillary.
Um, I see one other member of the public who is not making any indication that they want to speak.
Okay. I will then make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Say something?
I just wanted to say one quick thing. I'm sorry Jen reminded me before. So that TAB grant, I just wanted to let everybody know we received funding in full. So it's officially complete. So we saw 49,000 there.
Right on.
Just word updated.
I'm in favor.
All in favor?
Hi. Good night all.
Good night.